Wish I didn't have to sit back to back.
Yeah, just try to push them in that direction maybe. Do privacy.
Unstuck.
So.
It's here too. Then. All neighbors. Just want to be identified.
Of course.
Something that's gonna happen.
Yeah. Oh.
Many second.
Um. I am happy.
Documents for maybe out there too.
Okay.
So this happens. Humans from.
How old is that?
This one's a ninety one percent.
Oh, that's two year old. Yeah, and I started.
Is it six o'clock?
Yeah.
No, I'm.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so we're gonna bring the May thirteenth uh city council meeting to order, and we will begin with roll call, please.
Sarchet.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Otis.
Here.
Item three, approval of agenda, a motion to approve the agenda in a second, please.
Second.
And roll call.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Otis.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
So, we're going to move into item number four, a very lengthy series of public meetings. So we'll begin with, is it, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. When was it published, Jenny?
May third.
Any written comments received for or against the budget amendment?
No, sir.
So at this time, we will have a report, Chelsea.
For the council to consider tonight is the second budget amendment for the current fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. The proposed amendment includes amending for one hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars in new revenue, five hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred dollars in expenses, and an additional one million one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in transfers. I do have a spreadsheet in the packet that breaks down all of those numbers for your review as well.
Anyone here who wishes to be heard for or against the amendment? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Second.
I then need, uh, we'll move on to a motion to approve res- oh, roll call, we'll have roll call first, sorry.
Vogel.
Yes.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
So I then need a motion to approve resolution twenty-two forty-five, approving amendment number two for fiscal year twenty-three dash twenty-four budget. Motion and a second, and then any council discussion?
Someone?
Hearing none, we'll ask for roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Otis.
Yes.
It's time then, moving on to B, to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed rezoning petition of thirty-six point fifty-eight acres, located at seventeen thirteen East Northside Drive, to be known as Sunrise Ridge Platt One from R-one to R-one A. Jenny, when was the notice published?
May third.
Have we had any written comments for or against the rezoning petition?
No, sir.
This time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report. Travis, we'll start with you and then engineer.
Travis Hornberg, City Engineer, twenty-seven, twenty-seven Southwest Snyder Boulevard. I'm sorry, council's consideration tonight is a request for rezoning submitted by uh Rock Equity Holdings um on the uh property located at seventeen sixteen East Northside Drive. This property is currently zoned R-one. We've had some previous interest, and that's why the zoning is R-one. Um, the current property owner and prospective developer is requesting an R-one A zoning district to create smaller lots um and add a little bit of variety uh in contrast to some of the other development that is currently occurring west. As part of this rezoning, um, the developer has not requested a comp plan amendment. Um, in accordance with the comp plan, uh, this property is slated to have a density of between one and four dwelling units per acre as a low-density residential use. The developer is represented tonight, if you've got any questions or if you'd like to add anything.
Anything to add? If you do, come forward, please.
Uh, sure, I'll just get up quick, just.
Just give us your name and.
Yeah. Dean Earl Gary with CDA, forty-one, twenty-one Northwest Ripley Drive, uh Corey Cox is also here tonight. Yeah, just wanted to let you know we're here, any questions? The, the property to the east of us is a medium-density residential land use, so this kind of gives a bit of transition towards that. And ninety-nine, or over ninety-five percent of the surrounding property owners consented and these recommended through. Didn't have anything else, just let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
I do, or do you want me to wait?
No, go ahead.
So, I, I'm curious, so what for, for these thirty-six acres, what would the density or what would the number of homes be with R-one, and what far are they going to?
So, we have a concept that's approximately a hundred and five lots with R-one A. With R-one, it would be, which is approximately three units per acre. I don't have an exact number, we didn't lay it out for, for R-one, but the typical density for R-one is probably two point three, two point five, something like that, so I have to do the math, that's probably twenty-five west lots, something like that, I would guess.
Okay. Did you, so I, I would, just, I know you mentioned the, the transition with the neighboring properties. In lieu of sticking with the R-one, did you consider, given that we're on a busy road on the north side, a, a strip of commercial, is that feasible? I know that's not in our plan, I know uh that some of the other to the west does not have that, but.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did look at, we looked at all kinds of different options for this property, and we, we felt like the commercial was probably best suited at the intersection, the stone property a mile to the east. There's a more of a hard intersection at that, at that location, and that would allow more transition from the, from the bigger single-family lots to, to the commercial. And that's one of the reasons we're going to smaller lots here is because we're along, along Northside Drive, so it's obviously a busy road. Uh, we're just kind of working our way from lower density to uh medium density, and then at the corner, we felt like commercial better, better suited at, at the corner. And even though these are, these are a little bit smaller lots, they're still bigger than what the code, uh, the minimum requirements are, so we feel like it's pretty good, pretty good use for the, for the land.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the rezoning petition? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. And a second?
Second.
And roll call?
Vogel.
Yes.
Otis.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Not easy.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Did you, you wanted both?
Yes, to close around the reopen.
Right.
So, moving on then, uh, I need a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two forty-four dash seven hundred, approving the rezoning petition, ask for a motion and a second?
So.
Is there any additional council discussion?
Just to clarify, really, to let you know and appreciate the context, and for me, one of movement on one of those directions would help out. Either the density or the strip of commercial.
I guess I also would like to see use on Northside Drive for commercial.
So we've had a motion and a second? We need roll call then.
Otis.
Yes.
Sarchet.
No.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Moving on then to item C, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed rezoning petition of seven point six-two acres located at six-oh-nine East Northside Drive to be known as Big Creek Commons Platt Two from R-one to R-one A. Jenny, when was the notice published?
May third.
Have we had any written comments for or against the rezoning petition?
No, sir.
So at this time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report. Travis?
So for council's consideration tonight, there is a rezoning petition request uh for seven point six-two acres located north of Northside Drive at six-oh-nine East Northside Drive, approximately, that is the existing home that's included in the area. Um, the remainder of the area doesn't currently have an address, um, but that gives you an idea of where it's at. Um, the whole area is currently zoned R-one, and the property owner, uh, William C. Naplal C., has requested rezoning to R-one A. Fifty-five point eight-three percent of the surrounding buffer uh has consented the required fifty percent threshold. Um, and then in accordance with the comp plan, this uh area is shown as low-density residential, having a density of one to four dwelling units per acre. Uh, the developer has not uh requested a comp plan amendment for this change. One thing worth noting is, this is in the original concept, uh, when the property owner pursued rezoning of a bulk of this area to R-one, they did not own the long uh single-family residential home on the west side of what will eventually be North Seventh Street. They are in the process of pursuing amended preliminary platte based on the, the findings of this rezoning, um, to add that as a double-fronted, or a double-headed street as opposed to the single-street that was previously uh proposed. And a bulk of the remainder of Big Creek Commons, as shown on the preliminary platte, is R-one. There would be a remnant of R, or uh, the, a bulk of it is shown as R-one A, excuse me. And then there would be a remnant of R-one, um, just east of this rezoning. The developer is present, uh, and if I missed anything or if you have questions, uh, I'd ask Tom to come up. Have anything?
Thank you. I'll hand it out so you can see this a little better.
Thank you, sir.
So Mayor Carson and members of council, Tom Witten, Nat Properties, five thousand West Town Parkway in West One. Yeah, so the, the seven acres in the request, that's this area that's highlighted in the green marks on the west side of the platte. I'm showing you the entire area, what we intend to plant here in this next phase. And uh as Travis mentioned, you know, a majority of this site is zoned R-one A, and that includes this area right here where we're showing now eighty-foot lots instead of sixty-five-foot lots. We met with builders and they expressed a preference for larger lots. So we've got two-thirds of the lots are eighty-footers, and then uh just one-third being the sixty-five footers on Seventh Street. These are some of the deepest eighty-foot lots I've ever planted in thirty years. Some of these are two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet deep. Typically, what we like to see on an eighty-foot lot is at least a hundred-and-fifty feet of depth. Builders put those bigger houses on an eighty-foot lot. If you have at least a hundred-and-fifty feet, you've still got some good rear yard. So we did buy the Feller parcel here on the west side of Seventh Street. But even with that purchase, these lots do get limited in their depth to that hundred-and-twenty-five, hundred-and-thirty feet of depth. Therefore, we feel sixty-five-foot lots are more appropriate in that area. Yet, and having said that, probably still talking about houses that are in the four-hundred to five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, so still good value. If I missed anything, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I do want to key in on one of the points you made, not for what we're talking about tonight, but so we've previously gone through, you would refer to as the bulk of, of this development, Big Creek Commons, and most of it's R-one A, which we changed from R-one to R-one A.
Correct.
But you're saying you, you did not go with the required density, you went above and beyond that. It's more similar to what R-one would be.
Yeah.
Based on.
Right. Everything, everything in red here, we've already submitted a revised preliminary platte for eighty-foot lots.
Okay. Okay. I don't remember what I was talking, I think, but um, so, so back to what we are talking about, if I did the same math that these gentlemen had proposed, we're talking about twenty-three, twenty-four lots in this section, if it were to be R-one A as opposed to nineteen or twenty if it was uh R-one, is that same in the ballpark?
I think it was a difference of four lots.
Four lots, okay.
That is.
Math is working, so. Thank you for clarifying that, and I do appreciate the, the direction that it's going, I still do. For a lot of the reasons that, that were referenced earlier, this is a footprint as we expand now, so the rezoning is appropriate, or zoning is appropriate in all cases, it's really appropriate when it lends itself to what the next one. So, at the same density in terms of.
Thank you. Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the rezoning petition? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Second.
And roll call?
Vogel.
Yes.
Otis.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Moving on then to item one, I need a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two forty-four dash eight hundred, approving the rezoning petition. Motion and a second, please.
Someone?
Second.
Any additional comment? Roll call.
Otis.
Yes.
Sarchet.
No.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to D, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed amendment to the twenty-sixteen Polk City Comprehensive Plan by Updating the Future Land Use Plan. Jenny, when was the notice published?
May third.
Have we had any written comments received for or against the comp plan amendment?
No, sir.
This time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report.
So for council's consideration tonight is a uh amendment to the twenty-six, or the two thousand sixteen Polk City Comprehensive Plan by updating the Future Land Use Plan. Um, included in the resolution tonight, there's a, or a uh clip of the Future Land Use Plan uh for illustrative purchase, or purposes to help council understand the changes that we're making. Um, this is related to an amended preliminary platte that we perceive for Antler Ridge uh down off East Southside Drive, Northwest Forty-fourth Street. Um, the developer had, over uh a period of time, has made some updates to the way he would like to plat the development, and as such, um, I think this is the proper time to update the Future Land Use Plan as we're cleaning up some zoning, as we're um preparing to consider an amended preliminary platte. Uh, some of the highlights of the changes is we've updated the uh future roads as shown on the Future Land Use Plan to reflect what the um current proposal is, which is to take the Collector Street through the subdivision and eventually vacate East Southside Drive. That serves two purposes, it allows uh the public works to have a better access to the force main and water main that exists along East Southside Drive, as well as it uh cuts down on the cost of both maintaining that roadway through um the subdivision and eventually improving East Southside Drive to a performing road as it's currently drafted. Um, it also includes addition slash revision of the park area um to match the layout of the amended preliminary plan per preliminary platte, as well as um removing the medium-density residential that was previously shown in the comprehensive plan. Um, since the amended, or the original preliminary platte was approved, the developer has determined that it is uh more advantageous to him as well as uh more representative of the market to go with single-family residential homes instead of the previously posed by-attached homes um in those areas. P and Z has review, or reviewed the rezoning and recommended approval, uh, and staff recommends the amended uh comprehensive.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard for or against the comp plan? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So.
Second.
Roll call.
Solter.
Yes.
Otis.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Moving on to item one under D, I need a motion to approve resolution twenty-two forty-four dash fifty-six, approving comp plan F L U P amendment.
So.
Second. I would just add to, I, I know we're stacking up work session ideas left and right today, but I think a review of, of the comp plan, I don't think we've done that as council, um, where we've made changes, kind of what we've seen, that maybe we're close enough to the next comp plan too, I don't know, but that, if others are in agreement, then put that on our list of items to spend some time discussing generically as opposed to the specific changes that we.
And that, that, that is a good clarification, Rob, I appreciate you bringing that up. This is associated specifically with Antler Ridge. Um, there are several other small changes that likely will be, need to be made. Um, the change in the street layout affects some things between Southside Drive and Northside Drive, but I think it is, it would be very uh beneficial for everybody if council pursued that update, and if, if the, the more we can do at the same time, I think the more effective those updates are.
Yeah. Do we have, and has anything changed from when we first visited this, do we have enough, you know, zone X versus zone, that kind of stuff that we're.
Roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Otis.
Yes.
Moving on to item uh four E, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed rezoning petitions for Antler Ridge. Two point zero one seven acres from R-two to R-one, zero point one one six acres from R-two A to C-two, and fifty point one four four acres from R-one, R-two, and R-two, R, R, excuse me, R-one, R-two A, and R-two to R-one A.
Boozmilk.
R-one, R-two A, and R-two. When was the notice published, Jenny?
May third.
Have we had any written comments for or against the rezoning petition?
No, sir.
This time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report.
So for council's consideration tonight, are three separate rezoning petitions. Um, I'll cover them all kind of separately, but for petition one and petition two, uh, staff considers cleanup rezonings. These are rezonings not made necessary by the preliminary platte um to bring zoning lines in accordance with plot, property lines. We do this for a number of reasons, uh, enforcement is much simpler when it comes to zoning regulations, as well as understand, uh, uh, an eventual property owner understanding um the allowed and disallowed uses of property. Um, rezoning number three um is actually what necessitated our previous public hearing on a comp plan amendment. So this is the um portion of land that was originally slated to be by-attached townhomes. Since the original preliminary platte was uh considered by this council, the developers determined that the market is more inclined to bear um smaller, single-family residential homes versus by-attached uh two-family lots. Um, and so he is pursuing that uh zoning in lieu of the previous, or the existing medley of zoning, it's for lack of a term. All of these rezoning petitions were um self-consented. The property owner that's petitioning this council owned enough property within that, that two-year buffer to self-consent, consent over ninety percent to each of these rezonings. Um, P and Z has considered these rezonings and recommended this council's approval, and staff also recommends these rezonings.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard for or against the rezoning petition? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Otis.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Moving on then to E-one, I need a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash nine hundred, approving rezoning petition. Motion and a second, please. Any comment?
Uh, yeah. So, Travis, of the fifty-acre section of the rezoning here, you got R-one, R-two A, and R-two changing to R-one A, how much of that? Fifty point one four four is R-one right now? Is that in here somewhere?
Yeah.
I couldn't find it, but I.
It should be. So right now, oh, it, it. I would say less than fifteen percent. And the, there are only three lots completely contained within the R-one, R-one zoning district current.
Okay, so I, I mean, I do see this line with what I was mentioning earlier, developments uh is going the right direction, but I just wanted to clarify that. So we're talking seven or eight acres somewhere in that ballpark?
It's that, I think it's probably less than that. It's three to four lots. We're in R-one, and to my, I, we have not, um, we've considered the preliminary platte had uh planning and zoning, but to my understanding, there was not change to the lots either.
Yeah.
It's just to clean up the, the future uses and buffers and that kind of stuff.
And with the amount that would be R-two A and R-two, it would be a net density.
Correct.
I'm disappointed to see the loss of the R-two district, so. Higher density housing. I understand that the market is what the market is, but I'm just glad to see that.
Roll call.
Savage.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Otis.
No.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Moving on to item uh F, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed one A zoning district modifications. When was the notice published?
May third.
Any written comments received for or against the proposed code modifications?
No, sir.
At this time, we'd like to have staff provide a report.
So I will summarize generally, uh, several meetings and several months of work between staff and uh Planning and Zoning Commission. The details of the exact changes that we're proposing to make to the ordinance are included in our memo, as well as the revised ordinance um in your packets. But essentially, the purpose of this R-two A zoning district update is to bring Polk City R-two A zoning district into a more current version than when it was originally codified. Um, at the time, the R-two A zoning district was codified as a townhome residential zoning district. Um, the most desirable form of townhomes were row homes, so can attached homes numbering between three and six um that serve as a medium-density option in a townhome regime. Um, since that time, staff has met with several developers that are interested, garden homes, patio homes, or villas. Um, a lot of those terms are semi-interchangeable, slight variations in each term uh apply. But generally speaking, those are standalone, single-family townhomes that may or may not have a basement. They're almost always. They're almost always managed by a townhome regime, and they have common facilities, whether that be a clubhouse, a tennis court, something of that nature that is a shared facility. This amendment is not made with any particular property in mind. It is just something that as we've met with potential developers, property owners that want to redevelop their land, we've noticed a need for this, primarily because almost always the crux of those meetings is that we determine that oftentimes for the garden home type townhome developments, the most applicable zoning designation is planning and development, which in, we've received several complaints from planning and zoning in particular at the number of PUDs that Polk City has, and they feel that it's almost that, it almost comes across as the developer is trying to do something that our zoning doesn't allow, and from our perspective, it's not something that, an undesirable development, it's just something that is a little bit more nuanced than what the R two A zoning district currently allows. One other note is that this zoning district is set up for whether a developer wants to do townhome, garden, villas on actual lots, or if they wanted to do postage stamp lots with common ground. An example of the postage stamp approach would be Wolf Creek townhomes. A lot of those are on postage stamp lots where the property owner essentially owns the land under their walls, and then the HOA manages and owns the common ground between the structures. Included in your packet for your reference are several developments that we think could have been candidates for R two A under the current, or under the amended zoning district. The ones highlighted in yellow are densities that would actually exceed the allowable density in the R two A zoning district. I believe we have the density at six going this way. That's. It's in, it's in my memo. Yes. And then several other small changes at the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Daycare is a permitted restricted use in the revised R two A zoning district, the restriction being that daycare facilities would be maintained in the common buildings, not in individual residences. They said that was a concern, particularly with the density of the homes that would be allowed under this new zoning district. Having in-home daycare may overwhelm residents or the transportation system as a whole. Bed and breakfast were removed as an allowable use in the R two A zoning district for similar reasons, overwhelm the neighborhood system, as well as removing multifamily dwellings, i.e. apartments from the R two A zoning district, to clarify that this is a townhome district and not something that's meant for high-density residential. The R two A zoning district would have a requirement for attached garages to meet character and desires we ascertain as desired by city council and P and Z. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed code modifications? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
And a second. A roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet? Savage?
Yes.
Moving on to item F one, I need a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 2024-1000, approving R two A zoning district modifications. Motion to second, please.
Second.
And any converse, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet? Savage?
Yes.
All right then, moving on to item five, presentations. We're going to hear from the Des Moines area MPO, Comprehensive Safety Action Plan.
We'll see that a little better. Good evening. Mary, I'm Mindy Moore with HDR at 300 East Locust Street, Des Moines, and I am here on behalf of the MPO to talk about the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. So in 2023, there were about 385 awards across the country of the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, which is funded through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and Des Moines area MPO received one of those grant awards to do a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. So I'm sure you're all familiar with the Des Moines area MPO, but that planning region is about 500 square miles. There are sixteen cities, includes DART, and includes four associate non-voting cities, unincorporated portions of three counties in central Iowa, and one associate non-voting county. And the purpose of the MPO is a coordinating agency for regional transportation planning, and that's what it's doing in this project. It provides a forum for collaboration between the public and local, state, and federal agencies on planning and transportation issues, and it helps to manage federal funding for planning and implementation projects. At the MPO, you can always talk to Zach, I'll talk to just about anyone at the MPO about this, they know what's going on, Zach is managing. So the project team for the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan is led by Tool Design Group. I'm with HDR, we are subconsultants to Tool. Other subconsultants include HR Green and Confluence. So the purpose of the plan is to significantly reduce and/or eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes. Can we say fatal and serious injury a lot? It's abbreviated as FSI as well. So what is a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan? Well, first of all, I don't like the word comprehensive in it because we talked about your comprehensive plan a lot. This is actually just a transportation safety action plan. We're not talking about other types of safety, just transportation safety. And as I mentioned, it's being funded in part through the Safe Streets and for All program, which was part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and is focused on eliminating fatal and serious injuries and crashes. So through this project, we are identifying crash factors and risks. We'll identify a high injury network for the entire planning area and identify priority corridors, and then we'll look for proven safety countermeasures, and these are proven through the Federal Highway Administration, they identify proven safety countermeasures that can help reduce or eliminate crashes. So we'll look to where we can apply those on that high injury network. And then we develop an action plan to guide the communities in the region to help them significantly reduce or eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes. And then this is all community-based and data-based, so we need a lot of engagement from all of the partner communities and all of the residents as well. And then the idea is that once, so we got this grant to do this plan, then we can apply in a future round for additional funding to do the actual implementation and construction of projects. So the Safe Streets and Roads for All is the funding program. The other thing that you'll hear us talk about a lot is the safe system approach. The safe system approach is the Federal Highway Administration's guiding paradigm for traffic safety, and it has these key principles. Basically, death and serious injury are unacceptable. Humans make mistakes. Humans are vulnerable, that means our physical bodies are vulnerable, we get hit, we're going to be injured. Responsibility is shared from users of the system to the local government, to the federal government. Everyone has a responsibility for traffic safety. Safety is proactive, so we're looking at not just crash history, but what are the characteristics that cause that crash, and where else does that apply in the system? And then redundancy is crucial, so if one part of the system fails, something else is there to help up the slack, to help eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes. So you'll see the principles are written on the outside of the circle. The inside of the circle are the objectives. So we have safe road users, like all of us, as we're using the transportation system, safe vehicles, that's the design of our vehicles, the technology in our vehicles. Our plan doesn't really get into that. We're more focused on the safe speeds and the safe release parts, because that's where we have influence over the design of our transportation system. And then, of course, there's also post-crash care, our emergency response system. So the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan has eight key elements that have to be in this plan. The leadership commitment and goal setting. The next slide, I have an example of the goal that we will be asking you to adopt at a future meeting. The planning structure. There is a committee assigned for this particular project. The safety analysis, which I talked about, the high injury network. Engagement and collaboration with the public and with the other communities. Equity. How transportation safety impacts different parts of the community differently. Policy and process changes. Strategy and project selections, and then progress and transparency, which is how we monitor our progress and the time. So the goal setting and target year, this is where we'll come back in the future to talk about either eliminating serious injury and death, or significantly reducing injury and serious, and serious injury and death from transportation crashes, and then selecting a target year for that goal. So why do we need this? Well, traffic fatalities are a public health issue, they affect everyone. In the U.S., nearly 43,000 people died in 2022 due to traffic fatalities, and there's been a huge increase in pedestrian fatalities in particular. This slide shows from 1980 to about 2010, pedestrian fatalities were decreasing. Since 2010, they've increased back up to our 1980 level. We had a huge jump in 2020, which you may have heard about during COVID, as people were out walking more, people were driving less, but they were driving faster. And so there was a big peak, a big jump in pedestrian fatalities around that time, but it really started before that in about 2010.
Do you have this for Iowa, Mike?
I don't. That's a good question. No, this is in the U.S.
Quick question, is pedestrians walkers or where do bicyclists? Are they pedestrian or just walkers is what we're thinking? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, pedestrians are typically someone walking, someone on a scooter, someone in a wheelchair, a stroller, they all count as pedestrians. Bicycle fatalities would be separate. Thank you. In the Des Moines region, we do have some numbers in the Des Moines region, not the pedestrian trend right now, but so 1,881 fatal and serious injury crashes in ten years, and 151 people who were involved in the fatal and serious injury crash in 2020 alone. So in this slide, a lot of times we talk about traffic crash history in five-year increments, kind of bowling five-year increments. So from 2018 to 2022, in the Des Moines region, we had over 50,000 total crashes, and 939 resulted in a fatal or serious injury. So the block on the left there is about the crashes, and then the block on the right there is about the individual people that were involved in those. So 576 motorists, 215 motorcyclists, 119 pedestrians, and 25 cycles that experienced that fatal or serious injury. Some of the data that we've collected so far is showing rural areas have a higher percent of serious crashes. Most often, that is caused by running off the road, the cars running off the road. They're more frequent on weekends and in dark conditions. In fact, one-third of rural fatal and serious injury crashes occurred in dark and light conditions. We also sometimes talk about dark light conditions where you have streetlights. Obviously, in a rural area, you don't see the streetlights, so that's just a dark condition. Single-vehicle crashes are about forty-six percent of fatal and serious injuries, and crashes involving motorcyclists and pedestrians had a higher likelihood to a fatal or serious injury impact about twenty-four percent or so. So that's pretty, a pretty high percentage. So half of, it says VRU, that's an acronym for vulnerable road user, which is pedestrians and bicyclists grouped together. About half of those types of crashes occurred at an intersection, and the action of the person, the bicyclist or pedestrian, was entering or crossing a roadway in sixty-five percent of those crashes. The action of the motorist was speeding or failure to yield to that pedestrian or bicyclist. Males were involved in sixty-seven percent of fatal and serious injury crashes, and younger drivers are also a large group, and twenty-one percent of fatal and serious injury crashes. So now, future meetings, we do want your input, we want to know from the people in Polk City and from you as leaders in Polk City, what do you hear from the community about locations that are dangerous, where, you know, dangerous for motorists as well as dangerous for people walking or biking, and what other feedback do you have? And we do have, I did bring this little flyer, there is a website and a QR code on here. So we have a website you can go to to drop pins on a map to add those locations, there's a survey to answer some questions. So we will be working on mapping out that high injury network, like I mentioned, and doing that equity analysis. And I think that is the end of my presentation. I have enough of this for everybody, I just put it over on the table over there. Questions?
Questions from the council, anything? Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Moving on to item seven, consent agenda items, I'll ask for a motion in a second, please.
Second.
Yeah, so before we go to that, sorry, we turned the page, let's go back to six, to public comments. This is the time and place for comments from any item other than those that are on public hearing. If you wish to speak, we would ask that you provide a comment card in advance of the meeting. Also, if there's anybody else here who didn't get a chance to fill out a public comment card, we'll welcome you to speak.
Did you have one person that asked?
For the public comment section?
Yes.
That is, yes, that is, thank you, Jenny. Bob Start, running for Polk County Supervisor. Come forward, Bob. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you so much for putting me on the schedule today. My name is Bob Start, just let go. I have the honor of running for supervisor for District Two, Polk County, and that includes Polk City. Very much a neighbor of Polk City, I'm really bringing up my family a lot over here. Live in Jefferson Township, have been there for twenty-plus years, live right at the other side of the bridge. Spent lots of time at Big Creek, lots of time eating pizza, ice cream, and enjoying the community of Polk City. Been involved with my own business in Clive, Iowa for thirty years. Do not have a political background, but I certainly have enjoyed running a business for thirty years and helping people be part of that business and grow that business. Kind of a mixture of places. Jefferson Township for a place to, a community to be in, Granger for a mailing address, kids went to Johnston, and spent a lot of time in Polk City, and come June 4th, if you would share your vote, I'd be happy to represent Polk City as supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Moving forward then to item seven, consent items. We'll have a motion in a second, please.
I have Walters and Savage.
I didn't realize that they had both gotten that in there.
Yes.
And so we will move ahead with a roll call.
Just want a quick comment. I wanted to add, Jason, I know you've got the community center pieces in there and covered that with the park's commission, I think. One thing that I would maybe give consideration to. I think one thing that I would maybe give consideration to, go ahead with this, is upping the out-of-town rental rate to a point where it either, you know, discourages and therefore gives more opportunity for folks in town, or just capitalizes. I do think there's going to be probably a bit of that, it's open, so. Something I, it was hard for me to use my liaison hat at the meeting, saying.
So, roll call?
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
So, moving on to business items then. Item A is a hearing for McKenzie abatement appeal. And I understand Chief is going to speak.
Yes, I'm here. On April 24th, they initiated a nuisance abatement for the property at 701 Waldo Street. While attempting to make contact with the owner of that property, discussed the problems that were being investigated, I discovered they had chickens on the property as well. That violation has added to the rest of the nuisance abatement orders within that same form. The owner Christina McKenzie, I did meet with her, and she explained to me that the chickens were her son's pets. I explained the abatement procedure, and as she got the opportunity to come speak with you, she so chose to. Our municipal code normally declares that it unlawful for a person to keep livestock, including chickens, within the city limits. But it also says that council can give written permission to allow. I do recommend that if you do consider reversing the abatement order on the chickens, that you do have some conditions and requirements put in place, not just keep it open-ended. I have listed on the memo, Ankeny does allow urban chickens. And I listed out the requirements they have in place currently.
I don't have those in front of me. Would you read those?
Yes, absolutely. Resident must complete an E-course on raising chickens in urban setting. Must apply and obtain a permit from the city to keep them, and it's $100 a year per feet. Max of six hens allowed, no roosters. Residents must live in a single-family home with a lot size of at least a quarter acre. Hen houses or pens must be at least 25 feet away from property lines. Chickens must be kept in enclosures or fenced areas at all times. Must ensure the odors and noises do not impact the neighbors. Must meet specific requirements for the storage and removal of the waste. And the permit does not allow commercial activities such as breeding. So, that's what Ankeny currently has in place. And I'm suggesting that's what we need to replicate, but there's some points in there to consider, especially the proximity of the neighbors, lot size, restricting the limit.
Thank you, Chief.
Christina McKenzie is here to speak next.
And I did speak to Christine before the meeting. Please come forward and let us know your thoughts.
First off, I didn't know you couldn't have them because there's others around the house with chickens. And my son and I, they're pets. They're also my emotional support. They're a lot easier to take care of than a dog sometimes or a cat. They're in a pen. We have them so that they're, where they're located, you can't even see them. They're, they're never let out. They're always in their pen. The waste from them, we bag up and we haul out of town. We don't put it in the garbage. We don't try to take it to the maintenance shed or anything like that. We just have the five hens. We don't have a rooster. They're not noisy. And neighbors to the one side and the neighbors on our other side, because we're on a corner lot, had them at one time. The one neighbor still have theirs, and they, they're roost in their backyard all the time. But, like I said, they're our emotional support, and we go out and pet them, hold them, talk to them. It's just kind of stress relieving to have them there for us. And they do supply us with the eggs. So, that's another benefit to them. And we've, nobody has ever said anything to us about them. And like I said, I didn't know we weren't allowed to have them.
Any questions from council?
I could add some more. This was not a complaint. That was, I saw it through an open gate, and something completely different. So, it wasn't reported by any neighbors or anything like that.
Did you see chickens on other properties?
Not, no, not there. This, yeah, we've had a couple in town. We've addressed already.
And we weren't called to the property for chickens. You were called for other abatement issues.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Unless you've got anything else to add?
They're not real noisy either. People think the noisy chickens are the roosters. They throw it crack-a-don, but we don't have any roosters. We just have the hens. And like I said, they're, they're just, they're really comforting, and they're my sons too, so. And we just really would like to be able to keep them.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. So, Amy, we have an item before us. It says affirm or reverse. Do we, do we do that all in one statement, or how do we do that?
Whoever makes the motion will have to make a decision as to whether they're going to uphold the abatement notice that's been given by the chief, or reverse that decision and allow the chickens to remain. And if you do allow them to remain, you can certainly put conditions on that. You obviously don't have an ordinance in place yet like Ankeny does, so it would be incumbent upon you if you want conditions that you place them in your decision if you are going to allow.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, it says, consider motion to affirm or reverse, or if we're not prepared to make a decision? Is that also something we can?
Yes. Then I think it's appropriate to defer a vote on the matter until a date certain. That would be with the understanding that they could continue to, the chickens would remain in the, on the property until you have made a decision otherwise.
And this deferment would be specific to their property. It has no bearing on any other property.
That is correct. The only issue before you tonight is specific to 701 Wall.
So, I, sure. So, I would say personally, I'm in favor of residents being able to have chickens. However, I feel like we need to have some conditions or some rules. That way, it's not open-ended. Because if we allow this, there's going to be more. It sounds like we do have people, and once word of mouth gets out, people are going to want to be able to take advantage of that. And in my opinion, I would like to see some rules built.
And through an ordinance?
Through an ordinance, yeah.
So, one thing you may want to consider is you leave, you defer a decision on this matter pending getting an ordinance in place and work then towards getting an ordinance.
So, Amy, would there be a specific time then that we would try to have an ordinance developed? Could we do like a 45, 60 days, something like that?
Yeah, that would be reasonable. You're going to have to have three readings of an ordinance unless you waive them.
So, maybe overnight.
Yeah.
But again, to Jeff's point, this is specific to this property, this instance.
Correct.
So, I guess, again, my opinion is I would like to see something. I would like us to have a stay on this, see if we can come up with some support for that.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go too. I'm in favor of allowing them, and I'm fine mirroring Ankeny's ordinance. I think it's, from what I've heard, worked out well. Other than $100 a year seems a little harsh to me for chickens, but the rest of it, I don't see any issues with. They may have to adjust some of the property line stuff, but I, you know, you were doing your job, and I, and I don't want to, I guess, how do we move in this general direction while supporting legal and appropriate, or at least?
That's why I wanted to make the point. I wasn't there for chickens. You know, there was another issue I was trying to address. I saw a violation, had to address it. But you guys had the option to meet with her.
Yeah, I appreciate your approach on this, and I do think it's something we need to revisit, and I'm, maybe I have a different opinion than these two. My biggest concern, and I'll be honest, as it comes to chickens here in town, is we have a lot more coyotes and foxes that come into our residential neighborhoods probably than Ankeny does. So, does chickens invite more conflict with some of those animals that I know have already attacked dogs? So, I think that's a special consideration that we would want to look at for our town is the amount of wildlife we already have that comes into our town. And if I have a small dog and my next-door neighbors have chickens, and then we have more foxes and coyotes coming into, you know, more, you know, a fox in the hen house is a term because they go after those. So, that's my biggest concern when it comes to chickens is we have a lot of that wildlife that comes into town already.
Yeah, and I totally, just go ahead.
You can add to that list, bobcats and red.
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, those other animals that may have impact.
Wildlife urban interface being right next to Salemville, so I'm a bit torn on it too, but I think I land being a little bit more progressive and wanting to have, wanting to allow people some things. My biggest concern in this particular instance is what do we come up with when we do come up with rules? And will your property even meet what we come up with? I think right now, you guys are sitting on 0.15 acres. And will you be able to have your pen that's going to meet property line distances? All things to consider, so I.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was going with the 25 feet. Because I, I mean, this to some degree, and it may just be specific to this property, this demonstrates if we've not had a complaint, then what they're doing hasn't caused an issue now. How indicative of other properties is that? That's the million-dollar question, right? But I do think that this issue forces our hand in the decision that we've got to make. If we're going to stay, or we're going to, what was the term we used? Defer. We've got to do that and then figure this out pretty quickly. You know, but an answer is an answer, and the only bad part of that, or anything worse, is a non-answer, so. Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions for what you guys are thinking? Are you wanting it so it's something anybody can do? Like, like it was pointed out, the way that code's written, their property would not be able to meet it. Just wouldn't happen because of the 25 feet. 25 feet, the lot size.
The way Ankeny says, right?
Correct.
So, again, that's an example. I'm not saying we're going to adopt it, or we may. I think the way our code's written now, again, anyone has the opportunity to come and ask. I think I'm hearing, you know, maybe the majority of us is in agreement with that, but we have to have rules. So, I, I'm not prepared to speak to what the rules are right now. I think we need to, because, just because that works for Ankeny, it might not work for us. I guess that's just my thought, right? I'm just not in a position to say what it is. So, I guess my comment to you would be, even though we're doing a stay, we might come up with rules in 60, 90 days that might not allow you to have those. So, be cognizant of that.
Yep.
Again, I don't want to speak for everybody, but.
That's my point.
Okay. Yeah. But again, to Rob's point, if nobody's complained about the chickens, and in a very, I did look at the property too, when we were flying back, and it's a very small property there. So, it's one of those things that no one's complained about the smell, no one's complained about noise or something like that.
It doesn't sound like you've got an issue with your neighbors. It's something that I would, I would want to be considered to as actual permission from neighbors.
Yeah, and again, that could be one of our rules.
We will work to collect some information. We'll bring that before the council, and we'll try to get something in front of you next, say, month or so, consideration.
But you do, and you need, I do a motion to defer.
I'll motion to defer.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Roll call?
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Moving forward to item B then. First reading of ordinance 2024-1100, amending chapter 92, water rates. Will need a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to make one comment. I understand where we are currently with our high irrigation rates based on our usage of way we have to buy water from Des Moines Water Works and such. I guess I would like to see as we join Central Iowa Water Works over the next few years, sooner than later, we revisit the possibility of potentially lowering that a little bit because we are 53% higher for irrigation rates compared to normal water usage. So, that's my only comment.
And I think it's fair to revisit after that and the Water Tower project, those are pretty significant water projects that are in the impact. I know when we just made the decision to increase the irrigation, that was the primary driver of, you know, rate increases was our peaking. So, at the time, it was definitely the right move was to increase and pay a premium for the key driver of our increases in pricing. I mean, there's a lot of other reasons, but that was a key driver. But it's fair to revisit, but I think the right time is probably once we get into Central Iowa Water Works, once the Water Tower's done, we have a little better map of how everything's going. But yeah, I agree, as changes happen, it's worth revisiting.
Yeah. Agree with all of that, and then I won't be here dates all the time. Central Iowa Water Works is scheduled to finalize or begin, what's the date where we're transitions from Des Moines to Central Iowa?
January 1st.
Okay. The other thing I would point out here is the same usual story on, I'd like to put out, if it's not already, PFM's report, though, folks, I mean, it's data-heavy, I get it, and it's a lot to wade through, even for us sitting up here, but to me, it's setting the, one, it's being transparent, and two, it's letting people know that even when they don't like it, there's an analytical basis for most of these recommendations. And if we could put something together like we've done in the past and asked for to highlight why some of these increases are the way they are, and especially this year with that chunk of it going towards the Water Tower. To me, that's a positive story, maybe construed otherwise, but Water Towers don't last forever. And so, we're in that, I think, 40 to 50-year cycle for the last one, and we also have capacity concerns. So, there's a number of factors, and I think, you know, people can draw their own conclusions, and that's their business to do. So, but putting out as much appropriate information as we can is our responsibility.
Anything, anyone else?
Also something, yes, and it's up that comparison you did of the metro. Is that still out there? Do you come here on the website?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And PFM's report's out there.
Oh. Check that out, of course.
Are we ready for roll call? Roll call?
Sarchat?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, first reading of ordinance 2024-1200, amending chapter 99, sewer rates. I'll ask for a motion in a second, please, and then discussion. And discussion? Roll call?
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Item D, resolution 2024-66, amending fees charged for collection of residential solid waste and recycling. I'll ask for a motion in a second, please.
Second.
Discussion?
Just to, I know this is an increase, and that's never fun, but it was approved at the EMWA meeting, the product of the environment that we're in. And I know that sounds like an excuse, but the haulers and the processing have been affected by inflation. um, the, the haulers and the processing have been affected by inflation, uh, just like everybody else has, so. Um, I think they're doing all they can, and uh, we're certainly in a better spot having consolidated like we did years ago from a price standpoint, at least. Uh, but the increase is straightforward and unfortunately appropriate.
Okay, so anything else? Rule call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Item E, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen hundred, amending chapter one sixty-six, temporary signs. Chelsea, do you want to give a report on that?
I would, thank you.
Please.
Um, so I did take a first stab at trying to draft a temporary sign ordinance and just making changes to what was in place. Uh, the council discussed this topic at the April eighth work session and talked about increasing the number of temporary signs allowed per year, and then also increasing the number of days that uh, businesses and nonprofits could have their temporary signs up um, from ten to thirty days. So right now, uh, the ordinance allows you two per year, I've increased it to six per year, and then the ordinance allows you um, ten calendar days, and I've increased that to thirty calendar days. Those are the proposed changes in the ordinance, the council can go lower or higher than those numbers.
Yeah, so thank you for putting this together, I, I tried to spread it around when I brought it up, because I, again, I know I'm, but we're, we're not designing rules for specific uses, but honestly, that's um, looking to talk on behalf of here and with the Legion and the churches. I, I, so I, I think we're unquestionably going the right direction. Um, I would say if, if, if the rest of the, the council folks are manable to uh, not just to go from two to six, but um, quite honestly, if that meant to others, I'd rather not have a restriction on that number, but if we could go to twelve, just, well, it's one a month. Feels, uh, I know that's a big change, but again, I, I don't see this as where our problem is occurring with temporary signs. I understand, let's not get crazy with uh, with, with, you know, willy-nilly allow whatever. We can see if we do have, if it does create an issue, which maybe there's something I can see, but that might admit with your ordinance if there's.
I would propose two a quarter, so about eight, but uh, I'm happy in the six to twelve range as well.
So Amy, shall we go ahead and uh, do the motion in a second and then vote on any changes?
Whoever makes the motion should incorporate those changes into the motion, first reading of ordinance.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four thirteen hundred with the additional change to the number, to the restricted number, which is currently six.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Is there any other comment? Rule call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Item F, change order number one in the amount of four hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred.
Sorry, wait, three readings on that?
That was the first.
Yes, can we have the option to waive the third on the next one?
On the next one, as long as it's on the agenda. Yes, I can put that on there.
I'm just gonna start over, it's a long sentence. Change order number one.
Let's interrupt one more time now, okay.
Change order number one in the amount of four hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars to the professional services agreement with McClure Engineering for Construction Administration for the Polk City Elevated Storage Tank Project. Gary, I understand you're.
Evening, Mayor, Councilman, Staff, um, Gary Brunson of McClure. Um, here tonight, I guess, just to answer any questions, uh, if there are any. I can certainly give a little detail if there, if there's, uh, if there's that opportunity. So, uh, we recently bid the, uh, the both, the two projects, the tower and connecting water main. Um, you guys approved contracts and bonds for those tonight. Uh, also had some agenda items in there related to the financing of the projects as well. Um, the next stage is the construction phase for these projects. Um, McClure would be then acting on behalf of the city, flaring with your staff uh, to provide both construction administration as well as some RPR services, according also with your staff. Also on the water main side for some uh, maybe additional support services that would be allowed um, on an as-needed basis, uh, as, as called by the city, as well as construction staking and some uh, coordination related to project financing through the SRF program. So that's kind of the highlights of that. Um, they take place really in kind of two separate construction projects, water main coming first uh, with that starting here this year. Substantial completion this fall, um, and then tower uh, starting thereafter uh, with substantial completion next year, and then final completion into the spring of twenty twenty-six. These take some time. I'll stop there, see if there's any questions.
Well, we'll have a motion and a second, and then any further discussion, so why don't you just stay there, please? Motion? Someone? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions of Gary?
So, just to ask this specifically, you may have addressed it. This is not an increase of, sorry, let me connect to, uh, Mark. When I see change orders, that, sorry, what is the actual increase of, of what we're?
It's as, it's as shown, yes. So this is for, this is for the construction phase services, so we did the design phase work, planning and design phase work before. This is for the construction phase efforts that are part of our work.
But compared to the budgeted expense, it's?
We're on par, we're actually.
Okay, okay, sorry, I phrased that poorly, so. All right.
It's a change order because we, we had the services just for planning and design before. We've now added in the construction phase services to the original contract, that's why it's listed as a change order.
Think of it more as an amendment to their contract, is what it is, because their original contract just were design services, and this next phase, then it's construction services that the engineer provides.
Okay, so we're not adding any services, we're changing the contract for the specific company and therefore changing their payment.
We're adding the construction services, which were not part of the original contract.
But they were part of the overall, but.
Correct, yes. Sometimes we um, approve contracts with both, sometimes we do it separately this way.
Okay.
But it's a pretty standard engineering.
No increase to the overall cost? Question?
So Gary, will you be coming before us again with any additional requests?
Uh, we have no plans for it at this time, no.
It's good to hear, so let's have rule call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
I'm saying.
Item G, thank you Gary, Snyder, we're excited about the water tower.
We are too, you guys have great.
Yeah. Made a nice addition to our community. Item G, Snyder and Associates Incorporated invoice in the amount of thirty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for March twenty twenty-four engineering services. I'll ask for a motion and a second, please.
Some of.
Second.
And rule call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item nine is mine.
Did you mean to abstain?
I mean, I abstain, I'm sorry. I know, that's refreshing, you're calling me out. I was giving you an opportunity.
Sorry, item stand.
You got old group on.
Okay, so, uh, I Steve Carsten, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, and in recognition of the fiftieth anniversary of the first National EMS Week, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteen through May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you to all those who support that. The other proclamation is I, Steve Carsten, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, do hereby designate the week of May nineteen through twenty-five, twenty twenty-four as National Public Works Week in Polk City, Iowa, and I urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees by recognizing the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Moving on to item ten then, reports and particulars, anything from staff?
All right, I know we've been here a while, I'll be quick. Uh, first of all, Saturday morning, seven to eleven, we have pancake uh, breakfast, and we're gonna do a station um, tour, open house and ribbon cutting, so Saturday morning, and then Chief, you have?
Yes, uh, kind of during the same time, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, we have our second annual cops and bobbers event out of Big Creek. So get some pancakes, come on, fish with us.
And then I just wanted to recognize some staff for their efforts on a call that we had recently. Um, incident date was on May third at Salerville. The involved staff were Jake Peters, Riley Noggle, Bryce Hibby, myself, Matt Iker, Matt Oswagen, and Caitlin Wood. On Friday, May third, at three thirty-three PM, police and fire were dispatched to personal injury accident at Walling Route, it was upgraded to a boating accident with possibly three boats involved. Shortly after that, it was upgraded to a water rescue due to someone being injured in the water. Police arrived on scene to find the subject in the water next to the dock with significant injuries. They secured him and held onto him until more help arrived. The ambulance crew arrived on scene and were in the water within one minute thirteen seconds. DNR, Army Corps, Sheriff Department, Polk City Police, and Polk City Fire Department worked as a team to get the subject secured to a backboard and removed from the water within six minutes of being on scene. Two tourniquets were placed on the patient's leg and arm due to significant bleeding. The engine from Ankeny arrived on scene and assisted with packaging of the patient. Ambulance four fifty-three transported the patient after seventeen minutes scene time. Patient was admitted to ICU and should be released sometime soon. I'm proud of the quick response and the outstanding teamwork between all of the agencies. This crew was also nominated for a Polk City Life Saving Award, and the award will be presented to crews when the patient is discharged from the hospital.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and your staff.
Uh, anybody else from staff? Then let's move on to Chelsea.
No, I haven't, thank you.
Let's move on to council then.
I have one item I wanted to bring up. Um, if you haven't been to our library, or if you haven't heard, um, last Wednesday, um, due to generous um, charity through the Friends of the Library and what's on the additional uh, funding, we were able to purchase a study pod. Um, it's a very nice study pod, it's gonna allow individuals to go up there and get some quiet time, uh, away to be able to do what needs to be done. Since Wednesday, there's been six people already reserved it. Um, I think there's gonna be some tutor opportunities up there as well, but um, I checked it out uh, this week, and it uh, it's a very nice uh, addition to our community, so wanted to thank the Friends of the Library for helping out with it.
Thank you. Um, so the only comment that, that I would make, uh, I spent a little time jotting a few things down here. Um, I think that our council is best when we're all rowing in the same direction. And I think that's really important, and I know that there's been concern about um, how I've handled one portion of the meeting in terms of um, uh, having people speak on topics, even though I do believe it's important to follow Robert's real, Robert's rules, and I certainly take the advice of our city attorney and our city manager. Uh, I've talked to an awful lot of people, mayors, city council members, our city council members about uh, how uh, they run meetings, how people think that we should run meetings. As you have maybe witnessed, um, in response to that, I have taken it upon myself to go out into the audience before all council meetings when I can and invite the public to, if they would like to speak during the public comment session, to fill out a comment card. If people come in late, I've gone out of my way to, to invite people who may not have had the chance to fill out a comment card, to uh, come forward and make their comments. So we're doing that already, but um, I think that uh, as you witnessed tonight under the business items, we, we did have a business topic, which was uh, an ordinary uh, business item for the council. But we did have a citizen who wanted to speak, and I thought that that was important for that citizen to give uh, her side of the issue. And going forward, I think that if we can move forward in a, in a very positive way, and if people would like to make comments on business items, I think we can do that. I think really the only thing that I would require or request is that people who want to speak would come forward to the podium and give us their name and their address, so that Jenny could uh, enter that into the record. And then I think we will also have a, a time limit on those comments as well. I think it's important to work on behalf of the council. I don't ever want us to be in a situation where anyone is uncomfortable with public comments that are being leveled against a council member or anyone in a public meeting like this. But I do understand that this has been a topic that um, has been brought to my attention more than once, and I want to do whatever I can to make us all row in the same direction. So I think we should give it a try. Uh, it's likely going to make council meetings longer, but I think we should give it a try and see where we go from here, and then do some decision-making uh, down the road. I do very much believe that how the council meetings are run is the mayor's prerogative, but I do feel that um, in this particular instance, let's be a bit more flexible and inclusive when we can, and open this up to uh, public comments. I hope that can move us in the right direction. If it doesn't, uh, I'm certainly open to having council members give me additional input, uh, and again, um, row us in the same direction on this topic. So that's all I've got to say about that as part of my report, so now.
So, actually, I, I didn't realize we were done with our section, but I, I wanted to address that too. So I, to, I agree with nearly everything that you said, and I, I do think having a discussion about this is probably more appropriate than making a change, and it also would be nice to let people know that there has been a change made. Um, because when, when I brought this up in, in early April, what I feared did actually happen, which was the folks that showed up for the levy rate meeting at the end of March did not show up for the budget meeting. So I, I, I'm very happy to hear the, the, the change that you'd like to make, and then do fully respect that this is your prerogative, this is, this is something under your purview to decide on how it works. I, to me, I, the best, uh, what I didn't do, and was I, what I wasn't clear enough in the April meeting, was to ask to have an agenda item specifically put on. So to clarify what those changes are, could, is there any opposition to having a discussion item on the May twenty-eighth uh, next council?
So I will say that comparing the levy meeting to the business meeting was like comparing apples to oranges, because as we've said a number of times, this topic is the levy meeting. And so therefore, we kept to the levy meeting, and I, I'm certainly not going to apologize for that.
I'm not asking, okay, I want to have an organized discussion about this so we can do exactly what you said, but I.
So I'm not confident, um, I, I think I've said what I would like to do. Uh, I hope the council members would respect that. Uh, does it need to be a topic on the agenda? Well, how about if council members talk to me about it after what I said tonight, and then we go, then we go from there, rather than forcing it onto the agenda, because I am interested.
Is the harm with forcing it onto the agenda?
Well, I would personally like to go this direction.
And, and discuss it privately versus publicly?
Well, I'd like to, if council members would like to give me some information, some input on what I've said, I think. input on what I've said, I think that I first deserve to get council input on what I've said.
Well, if we're going to go down this path, Steve, then we'll...
All right.
Because that is not what you said to me when I've tried to talk to you about this for probably the fifteenth or twentieth time last week. What I'm trying to do is what you said, and the spirit of what you said is working with the council. And then when it isn't exactly what you want to do, then that discussion can't happen. I'm not even actually changing anything or proposing that change. All I have ever asked is to have this discussed publicly. And I don't see why this needs to be a backroom conversation between individuals when we can just talk about it and give the full intent of what we're trying to do, which I think is aligned here in a manner where this is a public city council meeting.
All right. So we've heard from you. So other council members, I'm going to give you the opportunity to weigh in on this. Would you like to just give me your comments if you have any feedback? Or would you like to have this in a public meeting?
So I think this is a great step in the right direction, right? We are opening things up. We're making a concentrated effort to make our citizens feel heard. I think there are all some things we can do. I've mentioned before, too, I think people generally don't understand, you know? I think that's what it is a lot of times, how to effectively communicate with council members, understand the value of a private conversation directly with council members instead of dialogue in a meeting. So I think there's some education opportunities. I think we can also, you know, as we have the new city hall, maybe put a sign up. So I don't feel a sense of urgency to do anything other than what Steve is proposing now. Maybe once we're in city hall, we reevaluate opportunities that make it easier for the public to understand and feel like they can, you know, communicate with this outside of meetings, but during meetings. As far as putting it on as a discussion item, it is a little unique because usually the things on our agenda are business items. So they're either consent, you know, I mean, they're structured decision-making, usually tied to some sort of ordinance. And I don't think we have an ordinance on this. So it would be a little unique to handle it as just a discussion item. Not to say that we haven't had that before, but, you know, maybe it's a work session in the future. But I don't... I'm comfortable with starting here, continuing to educate people, and seeing how it goes.
I think what you've outlined addresses a number of the issues that I brought up, and I thank you for that. I'm not sure it needs to be an agenda item. And I also don't want to keep loading up our work session schedule. But I do think it would be a topic more suited to session than an actual agenda item. But it is a discussion I'm willing to have.
In our work session?
Yes.
I guess what's the distinction between work and our work session, the actual meetings?
The actual meetings are business meetings.
I think in council meetings, we have something in front of us to vote on. I think in our work sessions is where we've done a lot of the work to come up with proposed direction and solution. That's where I see the two. The work session is the figure it out, and then the council meeting is the decide. Again, not to say that I'm right or wrong, but that's my perception of the distinction between the two types of meetings.
So I'm not hearing anything... Well, what am I hearing? I'm hearing you, you're perfectly comfortable. I'm hearing you're comfortable, but you're...
Open to discussion.
Yeah. So you would provide me with your feedback?
Absolutely can.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm fine with what you proposed, Steve. So I'd like to see us kind of move forward with this and reevaluate. Again, if we need to have conversation on it, Rob, I mentioned to you that my ask was you kind of would... If we do have... Again, I think a work session's more suited for this because, again, I feel like a work session is more a back and forth, brainstorming, discussing, figuring out where we're going to land for our council meetings, where we do actually vote on items. My ask was, as we talked about, bring some suggestions on what you would like to see as a format, and that we could, if, you know, given Steve's approach, does it kind of fulfill what you were hoping for moving forward?
The reason I didn't do that is because it wasn't on the agenda tonight, which is exactly why I'm asking to do it, or part of the reason why I'm asking to on the next meeting, so I could bring those things. But if...
So what I'm hearing is you're okay with this process of moving it forward this way?
Yes.
Okay. Same here. So I guess what I'm hearing is that we're okay with moving it forward this way, and that will be our intent going forward. And again, council members, please give me your input on it because I'm always happy to hear from you. Thank you for listening.
Outside of a meeting.
Outside of a meeting. So I did not have a compelling reason to move forward with that. So thank you for listening, and I appreciate that very much. So now we have more business to deal with. We need a motion to go into a closed session and a second. And a roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sargek? Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
So thank you, everybody in the audience. If you're not invited to go into...